So, city council meeting workshop is called to order. Number one, public comments, we have no one signed up, nobody wants to talk to us. Good, alright. Number two, discussion regarding territorial square dancers lease property.
Alright, so we have become aware that the bathtub in the residential part of the square dancers location, which is also lovingly referred to as the Girl Scout cabin, has sunk into the subfloor at a minimum of about a $3,000 repair. And that's just, and that's without knowing if some of the joist structures are compromised or not. So that's just the surface of looking at it. The lease agreement does require that the square dancers make any repairs. We have sent them a letter that says that they can't rent out that part of the building right now because of that kind of damage. If somebody started to use that facility, it would become more damaged, et cetera. So what I'm asking you guys is, I don't know how else to say that, but frankly, how strict do you want me to be with contracts? Because I can say in the past, we've been relatively lenient on contracts. So if they are in breach of the contract and refuse to make a repair, I'm coming to you for guidance on what that would mean, is that then they're in full breach of the contract and we could take the building back, do whatever you want with it, whatever. Do we attempt to, do you want me to try to go at half with them? Do you want us to just go ahead and pay for it? Do you want them to pay for it? The contract states that they're responsible for it.
Are they aware of it?
Yes.
And what have they said?
It's been, Jim had a one-on-one conversation. I responded via email and via letter. You were under the impression, they did email me asking, well, telling me that we would fix it. And then when I responded and said, according to the contract, so I haven't gotten a response. They've not been forthcoming saying that. And to be quite frank, I don't think they have the money for that.
They gave me the impression they didn't have the financials involved to do the repairs.
They have no funds set aside to do that.
There's not.
I don't think it should be totally our responsibility, to be sure.
But our contract is not ours at all.
No, I realize that.
Why didn't they get such disrepair to begin with? That would fall through. I mean, number one, it's, you like that everywhere.
I guess I'm of the opinion that the, you know, they've had people occupy it, and I'm of the opinion that, you know, it has a shower. And I think, you know, so, I think the shower, evidently they were showering either without a curtain, or the curtain wasn't inside the tub.
It was just wet.
And so then the floor, or the subfloor got wet and then just rotted.
It takes a long time for that to happen.
Sure it does.
Definitely it was.
I mean, that's not just overnight, it's a lot of water on there.
Sure.
Right, I agree, I agree.
But now the problem is, we know the floor's fallen in, we don't know if the joists are damaged, but if with all that water, there is a good possibility of mold, they'll do for sure. If the joist is damaged, then we're talking a big chunk of wood, we'd go in there and fix that. And we're talking a 75-year-old building.
What part are they going to do with it if we declare they're in breach of contract for failing to repair it?
That's where the city manager, we talked with her.
You've got some options. And unbeknownst to us, they actually had tenants in there that we didn't know were staying there too.
Sure.
So, yeah. That's another thing that they did on top of not telling us.
Yeah, originally they, we didn't know.
By the way, I got somebody living up here for X amount of months.
I never talked to them.
But it is like, an house.
Right, it's now. Now it is. Probably because they can't take a shower.
Probably.
Otherwise, it'd still be there.
I asked them what would they do if they didn't have this place. Well, they used to use Highland Hall. I didn't ask, is that a problem? No. They just liked the idea of having the place to themselves.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's not like they'll be out and not be able to do this, they can use Highland Hall or other places.
But it's like $30 a day though, isn't it? It puts the rental fee for...
Something like that, under $50.
Right. A lot less than what they pay $150 a year.
It's really disappointing.
Now, it's a month.
They're not very responsible.
It was a year, $150, we made $150 a month.
Oh, a month.
Now, now.
Yeah.
But we pay $500 and some dollars a year in insurance on top of that.
Wow.
To me, it's like, why do we have that building? That's my question. I mean, especially if we're not really using it, and we're going to put $3,000 in a building that we're, one, under utilizing, that's really old. I mean, we've talked about potentially selling it or tearing it down. I mean, it's...
The land that's on belongs to the city, right?
It's in the park.
The whole thing is the city's.
Right, well, how much land is kind of right there on that side of the lake, or the pond?
Acres. Would you say 30 acres, Renee?
30 acres.
All the way to, I mean, because you go all the way out to Pine.
There's, there's both.
Oh, yeah. I mean, you know, you did the driveway.
Can we extend that, make it more park?
You've got a few options. One, you could, you could auction it off. You could carve it out and auction the thing off. You know, we were kind of chatting about, you know, use those proceeds for a dog park or something that could enhance.
Yeah, it was over $25,000.
See, and we've never had it appraised. That's the next thing, is that because we've never had it appraised, I don't know that yet. And then... Well, if it happened for a couple more years, they wouldn't appraise it for very much. I don't, I don't know what it appraised for now, to be honest. I mean, we could do that, we could appraise it. Will anybody's insurance cover the cost of what's happened? What's our deductible, Jim?
$5,000 on the property, so...
On what's in the property?
Yeah, and that would be if they would insure that.
Or is it their responsibility to insure it?
I would think there's some...
No, ours to insure the building.
Theirs to fix it.
Okay.
But again, we've got a building that's wood, it's not insulated, it's just an old shell, is what it is. Now, they've gone in and decorated the inside of it, it looks real nice. When they had their 25th year anniversary of their dancing club, they were in Highland Hall. And they had 10 or 15 other groups that came in that were, and they had plenty of rooms in Highland Hall, so...
Oh, they'd have more room there than they would have.
Yeah, it's just that they could, they left their stuff there.
Right.
They did what they wanted to do because nobody else wanted in.
Mention a dog park, I mean, we need a place for a dog park, that'd be a great spot.
I mean, that's another one. You could demolish it into a disc golf, we talked about that, you could... Now, demolish costs, Renee, you might know better, I was ball behark in $10,000.
I've seen it go for five to six if it's not a complicated place or has a lot of trash.
Wasn't the minimum on a dog park like 10 acres, and then we had to provide bathroom facilities?
It was about 10 acres. And usually, we were looking at putting it at a location where there were facilities already.
Right. So can we, could we get away with utilizing the facilities that we have at Highland Park? If we took, if we delineated, I mean...
I would think quite honestly that you could if you wanted to say this was an extension of an existing park.
I don't disagree, but the parking is not good. I mean, there's, it's pretty limited on parking anyway.
True.
But now, if you come in all...
We have to go in the other way.
Yeah, if you come in all high, now you've got a whole huge parking lot up there in front of the building.
Is there a park, is it paved?
No, it's all gravel.
It's gravel, gravel and dirt.
Well, you can park in the park area and walk up a little bit and see.
Is there, is there kind of a dam there or a walk on that?
There's a little walkway.
On the other side of that pond.
There's a walking path that goes all the way.
The walking path behind it now.
Yeah, I mean, that's something that I was always mad about, getting a dog park set up here, so, I mean, we looked at mineral wells at one time.
We've looked recently because the Girl Scouts want to do one, so we've been trying to find them locations. We are really limited on public-owned property that would be good for a dog park, that you wouldn't be dropping in all the money on the bathrooms and the parking and the water.
That's a perfect one.
But one place that we looked at, Renee and I looked at recently with the Girl Scouts, when you enter Highland Park, if you did a long skinny dog park, which I've seen those, where you don't think of a big field, but the left side.
Along the...
So you could meander that back and do a dog park there. So one of my thoughts was sell the property and drop that money into a dog park there, because then you have a parking bathroom. But it's not going to be huge. But I don't know what our user rate would be on a dog park, to be honest. I don't know if we'd have high usage.
You'd get up a lot of high, actually.
You do? That's what I was curious.
I've heard it before. And you see people with dogs all over the place in parks.
I just want to do the puppy scooping.
Well, according to dog parks, you're supposed to do it yourself, there will be signage, but...
There'll be bags up there.
It never works that way, we would be sending in crews.
They have a really nice one on 33rd and Edmund.
It's busy all the time.
I think it's a quality of life type of thing, so...
It's great. Well, I'm going to kind of take us back, so first, my first question to you is if they deny to make the repairs, what do y'all want me to do?
I think they broke the contract.
Yeah.
That was the agreement we went through on this last time when we found out people were living there.
Right.
And so we worked with them on that aspect of it pretty much.
I think for Highland Hall, it's not like they can't go anywhere, they just have to trust.
Yeah, I think the Highland Hall deal is a bit of an issue with local county agency services utilizing it.
Oh, I think you just got to give them time to do it.
But they can reply until decide whether they want to do it.
They probably have to run a fundraiser of some sort to raise the funds to do that.
Well, they only go like twice a month, it's not like they're using it all the time.
You know, I could, you know, I don't know how urgent y'all want, but I think Z brings up a good point, is just to give them time if they need to raise the money, maybe 30 days, 60 days, 45 days, something that says we're trying to, you know...
See if they're even interested in raising it, if not, they're not interested.
Well, probably approach them first, can you do this in 60 days?
With an agreement, we have a bridge contract made.
Okay. And then after that conversation, I'm going to say like 45 days to make repairs, if that sounds good. And then if not, I'm going to come back to y'all and say, what do you want to do with it?
Just give them 30 days and 45 days for the repairs, that's...
That'd be tight.
Yeah.
I hope they can fix the shower and I won't waste the time, that's why.
And then bring it back to us and see what we want to do.
Okay.
75 days.
Got it.
Alright. Number three, wastewater and line maintenance department annual update.
Get the hot seat?
Yes, ma'am. Head of the table.
Can I ask one question? Sorry, just going back, looking at this agreement, have they added more gravel to the parking area and removed the old trees that are falling that's in the agreement we've got? They added the gravel, we did the, where are the trees? It's number two on page three. Because that was the original agreement, if you're on page two? Page three. Three. Then that would have been done before my time. Did they ever do that?
Well, they wanted us to do more, add gravel and to kind of smooth it out and...
And then when we redid, I brought it on amendment in 12, they added gravel at that point. I don't know if they removed trees before I was here or not, I'll find out. Yeah, we think so, but we'll double check that. Oh, there it is. Yeah, because they added gravel years ago, we know that, and then they re-added gravel recently. I'm not sure whether we removed all trees.
No.
The city went in, I think we dug the...
We did the drainage site.
The drainage, on the side of the road, they put some gravel.
Well, there's no date on it, it's a month, just... This was Bertrand. Yeah, it was probably, front page. No, that was, well, that was the renewal of it. There was an original before that.
Oh, yeah, they've had this...
Sorry, the original... This says 18th of September, 2012. Yeah, but that's not...
That's when we did the renew.
That's not... Maybe the first of 13.
At least 10 years.
No, it's about 10.
Maybe a little longer.
Well, yeah, we were out, we knew.
They didn't put their, that language for the trees was in the original, so...
It's right here.
No, it was like, oh, 10 years ago? It's been a while.
Original.
Well, this must have just been a copy of the...
Yeah, they probably just changed the date, yeah, they did. They changed the front date, but the original was the trees. And then, this amendment was done October 2012.
Right, I've seen that.
Yeah, I guess we didn't need a...
Do you want to update that information?
Yeah, we need to.
Absolutely, that's true.
Thank goodness. Okay.
Well, good, thank you. Any other questions? Alright, we'll move on. Number three.
Okay.
Yeah, start the clock.
Our first review is on wastewater treatment plant. I just want to kind of give you a little background, we've got three employees with the wastewater treatment plant. And I thought it was interesting to note, we have 46 years of service with those three employees. So we've got some good people. The budget and the funding for the wastewater treatment plant, the maintenance operation budget runs at $293,788 for the year. $132,220 is on salary and wages for those three employees. $53,800 is for the maintenance and material and supplies, which includes lab supplies and chemicals. For the operations, which includes maintenance and lift stations, and we have eight of those off-site. It includes mandatory testing, equipment calibration, licensing, NPDES discharge permit, and all of that comes to $107,768 a year. Sometimes we run over a little bit. This year, which is the FY 2014 capital projects, we have three projects scheduled. Sludge removal, which will bid in March, it's an estimated $80,000 for that project. And we rebuilt one of the lift pumps, and that's somewhere around $25,000. And we're in the process of doing that right now. We also have, in that annual budget, the SRF loan, which was for the digestive rehab that we did two, three years ago. I think that's fine.
Is any of this related to the DEQ requirements that...
Absolutely, all of this. Yes. Now, for future projects, we have one that is really staring us in the face right now. Our mechanical bar screen is in dire need of rehabbing, and actually, probably you would have to go for a new one. And that is in the neighborhood of $150,000 to $225,000 is what we're looking at on that. And we've got to do that soon because all of the money that we put in the pumps that we're replacing now, the bar screen, is not doing its job pulling out the debris and it's tearing up our pumps.
The bar screen is that first part of a wastewater system that whenever we process in wastewater, the first screening, think of it as it screens big stuff out, medium stuff out, and then it goes to the fine grit chamber, which would screen out, you know, little diamonds or whatever. So you start with the big stuff, so let's say a stuffed animal gets into the wastewater stream. What's happening is that the bar screen is about, oh, they're probably four-inch spreads. So anything at four inches or smaller gets through. What we're having is that bigger stuff is getting through and we're having all sorts of problems later. So our process is failing at the very first screening system.
This might be a silly question, but I know we have that, is it the line, what do you call it, the fund that we got from Oklahoma City, what is that called, the line fund?
Okay, so water, line fund.
Water fund.
Water line fund.
That's a water, this is water-related, is it possible we could dip it in for this screen?
I don't know how they, I don't know what their criteria is.
I just thought it's water-related, and it's a big infrastructure item. Can we check into that?
I would check.
Yeah, that's a good thought.
Is this at the water plant that this is at?
No, this is at the wastewater, we're talking wastewater treatment plant.
Sort of plant.
The next couple of slides just kind of give you a review of what these three employees do. They have, they review data daily, they make checks for the changes in the quality, they ensure that the treatment process meets all of the regulatory agency standards, they keep up with the new regulatory agency guidelines and requirements, and they are also responsible for the weekly lift station inspections and repairs as they're needed. They have general maintenance, they do repair on the plant, that's the equipment, including pumps, motors, and gearboxes. They analyze the lab tests, they make operational changes based on those tests, they collect samples and record data. They cooperate with outside agencies in the studying of potential problems, and they inspect the blanket, the sludge blanket and the clarifiers. So they have quite a list of tasks that they do on a regular basis. The wastewater treatment plant for Guthrie treats an average of 850,000 gallons of wastewater per day. The city of Guthrie is permitted for 1 million gallons of wastewater per day. The NPDS discharge permit is good for five years, and I can tell you what that stands for. National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. And the Clean Water Act is a primary federal law that was passed back in 1972. It established goals of eliminating amount, the high amounts of toxic substances that were, went into the wastewater and then went into the environment. So there's another whole list of things that it covers, that's basically it.
I've got another silly question. 850,000 gallons and we're permitted for 1 million gallons, I mean, do you have times where we max out and get problems? I mean, I could see the football, Super Bowl week. Super Bowl game, very much for the toilet.
So far, we have not.
Okay.
So far, we have not. I'm not sure exactly what the peak flow is, but that's, that's an average, probably in the highest.
When you're going to see peak flows, it's whenever you have a major rain, and what the issue is, is that people's private sewer lines have holes in them, et cetera, rainwater gets into that, and that's what's going to cause chain filtration of rainwater, and then you'll watch it peak up. So usually, we'll see it when it rains, it gets high. But we're, we're in pretty safe conditions.
Yeah, right now, we are.
Or as far as capacity.
Do you see any future mandates on us with the 2015 expiration of our...
That is a very good question. I, yes, I'll let you do that.
I met with an engineer the other day that spoke to our inspector's supervisor, and based on our history right now, we're not expecting major changes. I think there's going to come down how we disinfect, basically, how we, every quarterly, annually, how we do some disinfection, there's going to be some operations changes. I do believe that there's going to be a need for a clarifier at some point. I don't know if the department's going to require it or not, but it's getting so strict that a secondary clarifier, which would run about 1.3 million, and these aren't, unfortunately, these aren't cheap projects, you know? I don't know if the department's going to require it. From what I'm hearing right now, we're not anticipating major change, some operational change, which we're pretty thankful if that happens.
Is a clarifier a Band-Aid, or is that going to really give us...
Oh, no, it'll, it'll last you a long time.
It'll last you, okay. So if we do that, we shouldn't have problems for a while?
Basically, in a one MGD plant typically does have two clarifiers, we have one. We have a primary clarifier, so when you go out there and you see the big round things, it's one of your clarifiers, we need another.
How, what's the, how much life do we have in that currently?
Ooh, I, I have to... I've got a big wastewater study that y'all did a few years ago that might give me a better lifespan. It's really that it should go through two processes, not necessarily, what I'm not saying, I'm not saying you get one and get rid of the other one, it's, it's a two-stage process is what you want in your, in your system. But I'll look at that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Long span.
Because we'll definitely have to worry about the financial output on that.
It's a big thing.
I mean, that might be a bond issue, it's big enough.
Unfortunately, about wastewater, because people don't see it.
Yeah.
They don't like to fund it.
Yeah, that's a hard...
It's just not, they flush a toilet and it goes away.
Yeah.
And that's not...
Yeah, but when you flush it, and it doesn't go away.
That's, that's usually when residents care.
Maybe the line fund again, let's see, line fund, we could tap into that.
One of the things that will help us when it comes time to re-putment is that since 2011, we've made enormous strides to implement upgrades and improvements to the plant. We upgraded our five lift pumps, we had about $81,000 worth of rebuilding on the, and replacing the lift pumps, and that's the main part of the operation, the sludge pumps, the clarifier. We even did $57,000 worth of work on that. So, and then all the other things, like the grit chamber, the generators, the lift station number six was a big one. It's just, it's just a lot that we've done, and they've seen that we've done this. The biggest one has been the change from chlorine gas to liquid chlorine. We had the good fortune to be able to use this CW-SRF revolving loan funds from the OWRB board that was for the C-MOM program. And that's all connected to the ODQ consent order number 10254, in the amount of $268, $450. So we've got a lot to show in our progress of this plant upgrades. So that should help us out tremendously. We had another thing that was brought to my attention just before I ended this, and I thought I'd mention it because it's a safety issue that we have addressed. We've changed from use of biosulfate to sodium thiocelphate. And the way I understand it, it has something to do with fumes that come up, and we have eliminated that, so our employees are much safer now for that.
How are we paying, I know we have a loan, the CW-SRF revolving loan, how do we, how are we paying that off?
Well, that's the one that we...
Through a fee, or...
Well, yes, that's the C-MOM fee that we did.
Oh, it's part of the C-MOM?
Yes. That we did for the lines that we did just recently.
Okay.
So that's part of that. Well, that's all I have about the wastewater treatment plant.
Let me be the first to tell you that you and all your, all the folks doing it are crap-tastic. I've been waiting all week, hey, aren't you?
They are, those guys are crazy.
Very good. It's a kitchen.
I know that that's been one.
My favorite word.
Okay, let's go real quick on this then. Line maintenance, got a staff of eight, eight employees, and they do a fantastic job too. They handle about 76 miles of water line, 86 miles of sewer line, and all the repairs and maintenance for 3,600 customers of water, a lot of fire hydrants and manholes, and that encovers water line flushing, disconnects, reconnects, services of customers with water that turns on and off, pressures, line jetting, you name it, they do it. One of the things with the line flushing and the jet, jetting, we've, we're trying to develop a process through our car track system to schedule these automatically, which will help the work orders, it'll also make our work a little more consistent. So I won't go into all of the budgeting, we have like a $610,000 budget for wages, material and supplies, machine equipment, licenses, all of that sort of thing. The capital project, the capital projects for FY 2014, we have the extension, the extensions, it was, and I'm not sure how, how we're going to do this, the city manager can probably address this a little bit better. We've talked about doing a line extension to the 80 acres, and of course, the big one that we're working on as we speak is the Coale Waterline Project.
Oh, we applied for, I didn't, we applied for, well, we attempted to apply for an EDA loan for the 80 acres, that was denied. It doesn't look like EDA is doing things like industrial parks or truck stops or anything like that. They're looking for projects. If y'all know much about EDA, if you remember like the airport, it's a very, very political, and it has to be hot and awesome and cultural, and EDA is looking for those hot projects. Unfortunately, our 80-acre industrial park was not quite hot enough. If they're wanting to, they want it next to rail, or it has to then have like literally a cultural arts center next to it, they're leaning much more that way, they're not giving out money for that. That was the purpose of that.
Could be a cultural arts center up there.[1721.62]
You could, you could. Um, and so right now that's on hold at the moment. We don't want to extend water to, to somewhere that we're not going to get money for.
Well, our biggest project with, with the line maintenance department is the replacement of our old meters with the automatic meters. And this is a, this is going well and we're on schedule. Um, it's a one point, about a one point two million dollar project. And it's scheduled to end, everything should be up and running by the end of May. I just want to let you all know that the, this cold, dry weather that we've had for the past three months has just really plagued our department with main breaks and line breaks. And these earthquakes that we've had over the past few days have not helped matters. They've been chasing leaks all day today. It's, it's just really kept us on, on our toes.
Um, and the Liberty Lake Dam did not collapse.
It did not. It did not.
No tsunami?
We have had every news channel, every one, no, it did not collapse.
That was funny, actually.
Yeah, that was a lot of fun, let me tell you.
Expenses that were related to the DEQ consent order, again, ten dash two fifty-four. And this all took place between October one, two thousand and twelve and September thirtieth of two thousand and thirteen. We spent a grand total of three hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. And that included all of the line replacements, the engineering fees and everything that goes with all that. And I put a little slide in here to give you an idea of what it costs to replace sewer lines. One mile of six inch sewer line costs nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. That is if we were to do it ourselves and not have a contractor come in. We're not set up to do that kind of work. We don't do that. But if you look down, it, it gives you, uh, eight inch, ten inch, twelve inch and what it would cost to do that. But the average cost to have a contracted dig and lay is estimated at fifty dollars a foot, two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars to lay a mile on an average. It's, it's very expensive. And in that mile, you're required to have eighteen manholes at eleven hundred dollars apiece. That's based on eight foot dig depth and manhole depth.
Is this going right down the middle of the street or is this on the side or?
Wherever.
It's wherever.
Yeah, I thought you were going to say, because if they were going down the street, you imagine that, you could probably double that.
It's higher price for concrete.
Yeah.
So that gives you a little bit of what we've earned out and what we're doing.
When they originally talked about the C-MOM stuff, that there could be phases.
Yes.
Um, and depending how this phase went, um, what do you guys think that, you know, we have this phase, it's going to be done soon, right? What, uh?
It was done.
Is that, or what is done? Um, what's the outlook? Does it look like we're good for a while?
Well, we, uh, submitted our audit for twenty thirteen and we have not been given, um, they go through it like with a fine tooth comb and we've not been given a response on that yet, other than the fact that they received it. So once they do that, we'll kind of have an idea of where we are and what we need to do.
Any other questions from Maxine? Thank you very much, ma'am. Appreciate that.
No.
Item number four, discussion regarding agenda items. Everybody had a chance to look. Anybody got any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Yep, got a couple of questions. Uh, page twenty-three. This is concerning the hangar leases. Ah, yes. And there is.
A typo.
No, okay, all right. So.
The agreement's right. The cover letters are wrong. I wanted to bring that up.
Okay, yeah, the hundred and fifty forty-nine is not, there's not a.
See on my highlight.
Um, it says that it will increase from one fifty forty-nine to one fifty forty-nine, which doesn't make any sense at all. Um, but it really is correct on eleven ninety-six. But what you're voting on is the agreement. The agreement's correct. It was a typo on the, on the.
It should have been like a hundred and thirty-six or something.
It is.
The next.
Well, Justin's here. It is on the agreement. Let me see. Justin, you, we had that conversation this morning.
Yes.
Exhibit A. There. It's one thirty-eight fifty-three. So thank you to y'all vote on agreements and not cover letters.
And then on page twenty-seven, you corrected that too?
Yep, that was the other one. Yeah, the agreement's correct.
The increase rate was zero, zero point two four, which made it like fifty-seven dollars for last year. Really wasn't that bad.
It should have been an eight in front of the two four.
It was point oh eight two four to oh eight nine five. And so the agreement is correct.
Okay.
Just checking.
Thank you for catching it. We were like, uh, and it was too late to make the change. We have to post.
Okay.
That's all I've got. Forget it.
I know.
I knew you'd read the packet.
Anything else? Anybody got any other questions on?
On the number four, maybe you mentioned this, I'm too baffled. Um, are we going to just pull back because?
Number four is, on the, on the regular agenda?
Yeah.
Oh, why would we pull it? I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, we talked about today, um, oh, okay, sorry. Never mind, never mind.
It's the residents.
Right, right.
Not the spread answers.
Yeah, never mind.
Anything else? Number five, request for future items of discussion.
I had a request, Councilmember Coffin and Mayor Scravland to talk about vacant building registry. We had to post the agenda on Thursday because of the holidays, so that's why I didn't get it on today because I found out about this, well, Thursday night. Um, so I'll, I'll put that on the next workshop.
Okay.
And after talking to Councilmember Coffin, she had some good ideas for difference between downtown versus residential. Um, so we'll have a conversation about vacant building issues. Oklahoma City's passing something and we were just reading.
Yeah, and they passed something down there looking at, no, no building registries or something? Yeah, so we got to.
She's a few things that you could do.
Yeah, we got to see what we got to do on that one.
I forgot who the annual update is for next month. I'm sorry.
That's me.
I don't know. It's fine.
Bring on the newbie.
Anything else? Last call. Number six, we're adjourned.
They're ready.